Hey, is Jason, did he get here?
He did, he let George in and he left.
Okay.
Yeah.
We probably interrupted with this dinner.
We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome, not seeing H. Twain Wilson here, but we'd like to welcome the listening media to the meeting tonight. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis, Councilmember Akerson.
Here.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Matalongo.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Ruckregal.
Here.
And Councilmember Turner. You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer, silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Being a special meeting, we don't have any proclamations or minutes this evening, so Madam Clerk.
Yes, our first item is 18-100, which is a communication from the city manager with a request to approve the selection of Peoria disposal services to provide solid waste collection services for a seven-year term with three-year option to renew and to direct the city manager and corporation council to execute the necessary contract.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have just a series of slides that I wanted to walk through to kind of summarize where we are this evening. Just in recapping, as you know, we had a significant amount of public input with regards to our solid waste collection proposal. Recycling was the most discussed issue. Residents felt that they wanted to see more recycling services being offered, specifically that we would increase the frequency, that we would look at different options, and that we would do more to educate the public. The second item was looking at extending the yard waste season. That was for many of the people that we had that attended, they said that that was very important. They also wanted to make sure that we were working on improving general education and public outreach. They really had no complaints about customer service for PDC, but they did want to make sure that we were clarifying responsibilities between the city and the contractor. So as we worked through that process, really, and just in summary, I think that in general we found that four out of five residents were very satisfied with our current services as being provided, and that three out of four residents supported an increase in recycling frequency. So as we put together the RFP, what we did is looked at making sure that we had weekly residential trash collection and disposal, that we were maintaining the toter carts that we had. We wanted to make sure that we were doing more frequent recycling, so we looked at structuring the bid to make sure that we had every other week recycling. And then we also wanted to, and that was both for residential and stack condos, but then as far as landscape waste, that's really residential only, and that was making sure that we had an expanded landscape waste season and that we were disposing of that as well. During the process, we had four bidders that submitted bids. Those included the City of Peoria Public Works Department, PDC Services, Waste Management Services, and Allied Disposal. PDC as part of their proposal provided several incentives to us as part of their basic bid package. That included foregoing the 3% contract escalator that they have in 2018, waiving the final two years of rental payments for the garbage toters. That amounted to about $580,000. Accelerating the landfill three payments to the city and county, subject to changing the agreement for changes in operating hours, and the ability not to open up the landscape waste facility at the landfill. So those were the incentives of about $1.3 million that PDC put in, or $1.6 million that PDC put in place. So we had our evaluation team, which consisted of Josh Gabhardt from FOTH, Patrick Nicteen, Jim Scroggins, myself, Stacy Peterson, Chris Switzer, Dave Myers from Peoria Public Schools, and Scott Sorrell from the county evaluated the RFPs. And as we went through the evaluation process, PDC came out first with the highest rankings. And then, you know, really where they were superior was in their understanding of the work, their qualifications, their compliance to the state and county regulations and their references. The city came out as superior in customer service, pricing, and compliance to the RFP since they had virtually no exceptions. So we went through the process. We held two policy sessions with you regarding this contract. After the last one, we had several questions that council had. There's a memo in the packet that outlines responses to those. The first was, what do we need to do to break even with the hybrid model if we were to look at that? What we really looked at there was we would need to have a collection rate of about 93% to be able to do so. There was a question on the number of unpaid households, whether that's due to a household being vacant, or whether it's just non-payment or something else. And unpaid condos, the report back tells you we had about 2,400 unpaid households and about 17 unpaid condos as part of the program. We had a report back on minority hiring. PDC Services has an 18% minority hiring rate with the entity that is providing that service, the waste collection service for the city. The city has a stated goal of 28% within Public Works as part of this contract, or their contract proposal. There was some discussion about what can we do to try and increase recycling rates. Well, you know, we tried to put in the report back that there are a number of ways that we can do that. Obviously, a universal program would help. Increasing education on recycling would be important to do that. And then if we looked at the city owning the carts would be one way of looking at how you could increase recycling. There was a question about China and what was the impact globally on the recycling market. And obviously, right now, I think with what's happening in China, there's some downward pressure on the recycling market that's affecting that as well. So we went back and had conversation with the city, and we had conversation, Public Works team, and we had conversations with PDC. One of the points that the city pointed out is that, you know, moving to a universal recycling program would be important if we were to look at that as one option. And they wanted to show the recycling penetration rate, and they provided this map which breaks it out by council district, the recycling rates that we have across the city. And here you can see that going from south to north, the recycling rate gets considerably higher. And that is really one of the aspects of looking at this. If we were to continue with a subscription service, it means that those people that aren't participating are really paying for it for those people that are providing that service throughout the rest of the city. We did receive a final correspondence from PDC last week where they agreed to reduce their residential waste fee from $6.35, 14 cents lower, to $6.21. They included a $60,000 beautification payment, and this was a payment intended to try and offset the cost of the downtown waste collection that we have. And then they agreed to index that to their cost escalator of 2.75%. They had already agreed to an education payment of $40,000 to help us to educate the public and use those funds towards education. And then they agreed to also index that to that 2.75% cost escalator, so that would grow over the life of the contract. They agreed to pick up the neighborhood trash cans and that they would empty those throughout the community, which is right now the responsibility of the neighborhood associations to empty those trash cans. They also agreed to a commitment to minority hiring, so that's something that they built in. And they did say that as we open up landfill three, as we move into the process of opening up landfill three, that they would revisit the concept of universal recycling at that point in time. So the contract would start July 1 of 2018, with every other week recycling beginning January 1 of 2019. And as we looked at this, and I didn't put this into the slide, but I went back and I calculated this this afternoon, from PDC's original submission, their rate reduction on trash recycling and yard waste is estimated to save, the reduction from moving down to the 621 figure and then growing over time, is estimated to save the city about $2.9 million from their original proposal. The change in their cost escalator going from $300,000 down, or 3% down to 2.75%, looking at that, we're thinking that's about $200,000 over 10 years. Adding the additional beautification payment and the education payment, over and above that with it being indexed to inflation, providing the trash collection, that's about $890,000 over 10 years that we would be seeing there. So all told, from the start to the, through the 10-year period of time that we would be looking at, it would be at about a $4 million total movement from where their original submission was. So I think that that was, you know, a significant movement on PDC's part to go forward with this. In looking at how we would have to pay for this, as you know, the council has adopted four years of rate increases for garbage in 2018, 19, 20, and 21. If we were to increase $1 per month in 2022, which is, which is just, you know, in that, that's really five years from now, looking at that as saying we need to add one additional dollar per month, the numbers that I'm going to present to you now will show you in terms of where we would see everything falling in place from a revenue standpoint. So I guess what I'm saying there is that, is that at some point in time in the future, I would want to come back to council and say in 2022, we should increase the garbage fee by that $1 per month, or just an additional increase five years from now. The city Peoria proposal and the cost projection scenarios show that in 2019, their cost per household was about $16.62, and that's for residential trash service, recycling on an every other week basis universally throughout the city, and then seasonal landscape waste collections. It would grow to $17.12 in 2025, and I'll show you the chart in a minute that shows how it peaks and then drops down once landfill three opens up. And then it would grow to, by 2028, it would be $18.73. And we estimated that with that one rate increase of $21 in 2022, that we would have $8 million of cash on hand, so we would be able to pay back the general fund, the monies that are owed the general fund, if the city of Peoria were the contractor. PDC Services, again, residential trash services, it's a subscription-based program at this point in time. It would increase the frequency to every other week collections. Here you see that with the changes that were made by PDC in 2019, their fee would be $16.82, that's all in, that includes the disposal costs and the administration costs. In 2025, it would be $18.04, and in 2028, it would be $19.67. We're estimating that cash on hand in 2028 would be $5.1 million. The hybrid model had the, which we had discussed at our last policy session on March 20th, had PDC providing trash collection services. It had the City of Peoria Public Works providing recycling and landscape waste services. Based upon all the factors that we built in, that cost in 2019 would be $18.29. It would be $19.40 in 2025, and then $21.17 in 2028. And there would only be about $800,000 of cash on hand in 2028. So this was obviously the most expensive option that we had. And again, here's how it's broken out. First, you can see the residential waste fees. It's $6.21 with PDC's revised alternative of providing that service. The education and beautification number goes up because of the beautification payment. That lowers the dollar amount down. The recyclable costs, PDC was the lowest there. Their landscape waste collection charges were the higher at $3.10, but because of the disposal costs that the city would have to absorb, PDC's disposal costs are lower at $5.92. So really, the spread is only about 20 cents in the first year between the city and PDC as we go forward. And again, this chart just kind of shows you the three alternatives. The green line at the top is the household charge. The yellow line is the hybrid model, that's the most expensive option. PDC would be the orange line, and then the City of Peoria Public Works would be the bottom blue line. So again, as we look at it from a risk versus cost standpoint, the city of Peoria was the highest-risk proposal because we're getting into a new business unit that we haven't been in before, but it's the lowest cost. Their services obviously meet the base proposal level. Peoria Disposal provides the lowest risk because they're already in this business, they understand it, they know it, and it's a lower cost. They've been able to move that down, they're not the highest. The drawback is that it's a subscription recycling service. The hybrid model did meet the base proposals. It lowered our risk because we weren't completely moving into that model, but it was provided that service at the highest cost, just because of everything that we had to move through. So I guess in summary, as we make our recommendation, as we looked at this based upon the movement that PDC made from a cost perspective, it really makes their proposal stronger. Their previous experience in the business is superior. We have very strong and very high public satisfaction with PDC. They've committed to, you know, revisiting universal recycling when we open up landfill three, and the costs are really in line with the fees that council has established. So, and I guess, you know, in summary or in closing, and I said this to the Public Works Director earlier today, if it wasn't for the involvement of the Peoria Public Works team, I don't think we would have seen PDC move as much as we were able to see them move as part of this contract proposal. And I appreciate all the effort that the city team put in terms of putting together a really thoughtful and deliberate proposal. But at this time, I think that with the costs and the way that we can hold the line on the costs, the level of service that PDC currently provides to the community, it's why at this point I would recommend that we go forward with PDC Services. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if council has them.
Questions for the manager of Public Works, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In reviewing your data, I'm looking at the recycling penetration rate, and it's obvious, if you go back to that slide, that District 1 and 2 are trailing Districts 3, 4, and 5. And to that end, my question is, is there a established education program? I see we have a $40,000 education payment that will be, that will come with this contract. Is there an established educational component that perhaps may even include Peoria Public Schools with the children? Because if the children get behind things, we've seen recently, things can happen. So that, I would like to see both District 1 and 2, the percentages get up, especially District 1 because that's what I represent. All the other districts are at 20%, about 20%. I see District 2 is 19, but about 20% or above, and I really would like to see District 1 at least come up to the 20% level.
I think there's two things that will change with this new contract. First, even with the subscription program, there's no deposit fee as part of the proposal from PDC, so there's no longer a requirement to put $50 up. It's simply a phone call and the toter will be delivered to the household, so that's first. Second, we did build into the budget $60,000 for an education program, 60. So, you know, as we look at trying to build in education, you know, this is one avenue that we can look at, is to try and redouble or expand our efforts to educate the public about, you know, really, recycling is just one phone call away. There's no other barrier other than making one phone call to getting, you know, a toter, and then PDC will start picking up that recycling, so.
I'm talking about, and I appreciate that, and that sounds wonderful, but a coordinated, intentional effort, because if you put a toter out there for recycling and you get all kind of garbage in there, then that's not helpful.
Absolutely. We'll have to continue to have the education piece that would go along with that.
And then my second question is regarding the commitment to minority hiring. I would really like to see that get up closer to what the city is committing to and have that codified in the contract, how each year, that there are some measurements that come back that show that that is happening, but also to see what jobs those, that hiring is in. It's one thing to hire clerical people at some amount per hour versus hiring people who are on the truck at a higher amount per hour. We're talking about livable wages, and at least in the first district, that we really need jobs of livable wages. So if we can codify that into the contract, visit with PDC if this is approved, to determine how we can step that up to at least what the city is doing.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
I think that makes sense.
Thank you. I had Councilman Seer next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Seer, manager, first of all, congratulations to you and your team for negotiating a better deal with PDC. Just got a couple comments, some questions for you. Number one, if, slide number five, or page five, I believe, you were talking about $8 million cash on hand by 2028. How much money do we owe the general fund right now?
Currently, the fund owes the general fund about 4.6 million.
$4.6 million. Thank you. As, I had a discussion with you before, so I know this is not going to be a surprise to you. My two concerns about this contract are as follows. Number one, I don't like the term, the duration, the contract being seven and three. I would prefer to see something like five and five, you know, five years and five-year option. I just don't like those long-term contracts. I think it would be an incentive for us and for PDC to make sure they're doing the usual great job they've been doing for us, but I think it would just keep their feet to the fire if it was five and five. I understand about depreciation schedule, they're going to have to buy some new equipment, and I do understand that, but we do have some new tax laws this year where they can depreciate 100% of their new purchases, so. And the other thing, excuse me, the other concern I have is the 2.75 inflation rate. We know in the last 10 years, inflation has been less than 2%, and it means, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars different between 2% and 2.75. So I don't know if we can go back to the table and maybe change the term a little bit, maybe, and the reason I'm looking, when I'm looking at 2.75%, maybe we could save some money to our constituent also, because we're raising, the inflation rate we're using for them is 2.75, but we're raising our fees 5% to 6% a year, going from $17, $18, $19, and $20. I'm not sure, I mean, I understand, I don't know, I understand it's important to pay back the general fund $4.5 million, but I'd like to see how we can pay the $4.5 million without maybe increasing our side by 5% or 6% when the inflation is, that possibly be 2.75% on their side. So maybe you can help me and our constituent taxpayers understand why it needs to be that way.
Well, since we still have to finalize the contract, I would be happy to go back and talk with PDC about both of those items, as well as the minority contracting issue, so.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I had Councilwoman Akerson next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a quick question about the neighborhood trash collection of the garbage cans that are in the neighborhoods. How, is that weekly?
It would anticipate that it would be weekly. I mean, right now, you know, we have, I think there's, we identified, I think, about 130 or so that would need to be collected. Right now, it falls onto the neighborhood associations to empty that, so.
No, I think that's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jensen next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd just like to thank, of course, staff for all its hard work on here, and PDC. As I mentioned before, you know, the two most important issues for me that I've advocated for several years since I got on the council is to increase the amount of recycling we do every year and to get rid of the fee for recycling. And, you know, that was part of their first proposal that we talked about here a month ago, and I think that those are the two most important things that need to be included. So I'm very pleased to see that and to see all the additional incentives they've added just in the last month. I do have some questions with regard to the education funding and your discussion here with Councilwoman Moore. Do we have a plan, a specific plan, for what will be done with that $40,000?
No, we'll build that out, I mean, obviously, over this year, between Stacy and Eric Shangroff and PDC, if PDC is selected, we would work towards building out a more thorough education program. We would include Public Works as well in terms of, you know, what we would want to build into that program for those dollars.
So from what I'm hearing and what my understanding, although it hasn't been defined, the city will be primarily responsible for doing the education, or will PDC be part of that?
PDC will be part of it, but will be leading that education process.
Okay, and what I would like to see, if we're going to go back, you know, pursuant to your discussion with Mr. Seer, and maybe add a few conditions to the contract, would be to have some kind of benchmarks or some kind of accountability set up so we can see that that education plan and that $40,000 that we're spending and that PDC is providing to us to provide that is actually working. and that PDC is providing to us to provide that is actually working? You know, whether the recycling is being, is increased by residents? And, you know, what other things we can use to measure to show that it's having an impact?
One of the, in the base RFP, one of the things that we required is additional auditing and reporting requirements of the successful respondent. So, some of those items that you're talking about of, you know, building in the data of, are we seeing that our recycling rates are growing up or that our tonnage is going up? We should be able to easily work with PDC to make sure that that happens. And we'll do that, and that's something that we can build into that. That then leads us into the education side, which means that we've got to make sure that whatever we're building on the education side, if the city is going to be doing that, that it's helping to drive those numbers up, so.
So, you know, this leads me to sort of my next concern or a condition that I would like to see part of this agreement is some kind of reporting from PDC. I mean, that was one of the pluses for going with the hybrid model is that we would have full transparency. And we would know how much we were recycling, what types of things we were recycling, what the weight was of what we were recycling, how much is actually being recycled, and how much is going to the landfill. So I would like to see that as an added condition or component to this agreement, whether they provide us with monthly reports or quarterly reports. I think that would be very helpful. And it would help us to increase recycling throughout the city.
As I said, we built that into the base RFP, so it shouldn't be a surprise to them. And I'm sure we'll be able to work on that and address that.
I see some shaking their heads, yes, so. Okay, I've got a few other questions. With regard to the minority workforce component, I guess my question is, I know that in the city's proposal, the goal is to have 28% of the workforce be minority. But I know that's a goal. What is our current percentage of minorities working in the Public Works Department?
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven and a half.
So it is close to that, okay. I wasn't sure, that's what I wanted to know. I guess, related to that too, I'd like to know if PDC has a program set up, which I think, you know, the city is focused in getting employment from our disadvantaged areas in the city, those that have high poverty and low unemployment. So it would be great if that could be part of what PDC is going to do with their commitment to increase minority participation is to do, you know, to focus on those areas in our city with job fairs and maybe training programs. I think that would help. Okay, let's see. I've got a couple of questions about the specifics in the contract. With regards to the $60,000 beautification payment, where is that payment going to go? Will it just go to our general fund, or how?
It would go back into the garbage fund. I mean, we just anticipate that that would be part of the program itself. Because we're incurring those costs out of the garbage fund for the downtown collection. And so this is just trying to offset those costs.
And is there a way that, so we'll mark it and make sure that that's what it'll go to? Because if it ends up that we're going to have, I don't want to see us borrowing from that like we've borrowed from the general fund, okay. Hang on, I have a few more questions, if you stick with me here. I do have a question about the universal recycling. Of course, I would much prefer to have universal recycling up front. And you explain it two different ways in your, the council communication. It states when Landfill Three opens, PDC will ramp up their recycling. And I think here, you said we'll revisit the universal recycling. So I want clarity on what that means.
I think that it would require us to sit down and have that discussion with PDC to determine what it's going to take for us to ramp that up and build that in. There's no barrier, if we move to the subscription program as they've identified it, there's no barrier to anyone calling and saying, "I want to participate in the recycling program." The issue is the cost, there's an initial cost to getting totas for every household in the city and then putting that out. Now, when we, and if I could, I'll just jump back here for a second and show you this. You see the drop-off in 2022. That's when we anticipate that Landfill Three opens. And so the tipping fee goes down. A good chunk of the budget that we have, over 35% of this budget, is waste disposal. It's disposing of the waste that we collect. And so we're paying a very high tipping fee right now at our Landfill Two by contract. And as that goes down, that's going to free up some resources for us to look at what we might be able to do to provide universal recycling at that point in time. Maybe the city applies for grants that are available to get universal totas throughout the city. We work with PDC on that implementation. And what we discussed last week with them was that we would revisit that and try and ramp that up once that we move to having Landfill Three open and operational.
So, do we have a firm commitment that once Landfill Three is open?
There's no firm commitment, but there is, again, there's no barriers right now. It just says that we will revisit that issue once we know that our costs have dropped considerably.
Okay, so there's no guarantee that we'll move to that during this contract? Okay, that does concern me a little bit. Hang on one second. I had a couple other questions. Back to the, I think actually Councilwoman Moore asked this. If we could find out what the positions are that the 18% minority within the workforce and if they're located here in Peoria, I'd like to know that as well. Let me check my notes here real quick. Oh, one question which I actually did ask, I think, at one of our policy sessions. Is there a plan for people that have already, you know, been paying the deposit for the recycling tota? Whether they would get reimbursed or get, I don't know, a rebate on their bills?
I'd be happy to have that conversation again with PDC about that. I mean, at this point in time, I don't believe that there was any plan to reimburse folks for that. But that's a discussion that I'll be happy to revisit with them.
Okay. I think that's all I have right now. Thank you.
I had Councilmember Ruck Regal next.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, I think most of my questions have been asked. And thank you to City Manager Urick on doing those. But I think I'd be remiss if I would not add at least a couple of comments. And I think it started at the last meeting during citizens' time to address the council. And I thought we had actually heard some nice comments about the process, that this conversation is taken. And Mr. Blomshine stood up and talked about the process. And I think that, I'd like to thank staff, thank the council, and thank those four bidders that came through and walked us through this process. I think the policy session was very helpful, us getting out in front of it and having conversations as a council on what each of us thought was important to be able to add into there. And I think the final result, seeing the cost savings that we're able to see in the final proposal, to see a contract here with confidence in the service that we have been able to provide and will be able to provide in the future, to see us extending those services, which are moving us maybe not towards the ultimate end goal of where we'd like to see the service, but definitely a big step forward in that direction. And also, working within the financial constraints that we have and that we've got to work with each and every day here at the city. Just from myself to staff and to all of those that were involved in the process, thank you very much, and I think the citizens appreciate it.
Thank you. I had Councilmember Montalongo next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just have a couple of questions. Back to the 130 neighborhood trash cans. I was thinking in District Four here, I know where there's some, but they're not necessarily in the neighborhoods. They're kind of like in a commercial-type area. Does that include those trash cans?
I think we were, and I'd have to check with the Public Works Director, and we can, you know, try and get a map put together for you of where those are located. But I think we were focused on those that were in neighborhoods and that were, you know, had been set out by Public Works at the request of neighborhood associations.
Gotcha. Yeah, I don't know too many in my neighborhoods right off the top of my head, so I would like to see that information. I know there was at least one neighborhood that was just recently talking about trash cans in the neighborhood. So if we could even bump up that number just a little bit, maybe add 10?
Certainly ask.
And just once again, so this was just more for the neighborhoods, not outside in the commercial?
Correct.
Commercial areas? Okay, because I was going to say there's probably a couple other trash cans that would probably be more in the commercial area, but I won't mention those. Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. I had Councilmember Grab next.
Thank you, Mayor. Manager Urick, on page three of the council communique.
Yes, sir.
Under alternatives, it's the fourth full paragraph down. You indicate that the other alternative would be for the City of Peoria Public Works Department to provide all services under this proposal. This would be the lowest cost.
That's correct.
But we're not quite sure that we're capable of, on this task.
As I mentioned, I think that with where we are right now, in terms of moving into a function that we haven't completely been in, it was that there's risk to that. And we would be assuming a higher level of risk than working with a provider that is currently doing the service and has been doing the service for us. So that was one of the concerns that I had with that proposal. I think that Public Works put together a fine proposal that was very thoughtful. And I think that they did their homework about what it would take to deliver that service. And it was the lowest cost.
Well, let me follow up on that. Just continue on in that paragraph.
Sure.
"Part of the Public Works proposal was adding on to the garage at Dries Lane to accommodate garbage vehicles and fire apparatus. This cost is $1.25 million that would otherwise need to come from the city's capital fund if there were ever to be a consolidation of services, to bring the fire garage to Dries Lane and have all of the city fleet managed under one department." How would that be the lowest cost then?
Well, even, even-
I had no agenda by asking this question, but it seems like-
No, I think what, when Director Reese and his team, and Jennifer Klenner from FOTH, who was part of the team, they're here. What they looked at, and Director, you may want to come up and explain a little bit of this. What they looked at is saying that they couldn't, in the current garage, we couldn't service the dump trucks that would be, or the garbage trucks that would be utilized as part of the program. If we expanded the fleet garage, it would be able to provide services not only for those vehicles that are part of the solid waste collection program, but it could also be providing services, and the fire chief's sitting in the back over there. They could be providing services for the fire department as well, and they could start to service those vehicles. And so, they built that cost in as part of their bid proposal and then amortized that out over the life of the contract. So there was a portion of that cost that they were paying back over that period of time. I think I've answered that correctly.
So when the City of Peoria came in with a bid, that all of this taken into consideration is still a better bid than PDC?
It was a, it was a lower bid than-
A lower bid?
Lower bid. So, yes.
Even with all of this added on?
Yes.
We were able to get PDC to improve their position?
We did.
By how much money?
Over the full 10-year period, it would be about $4 million that they were able to move their number closer to where the price of the, or the cost of the city's proposal was.
This be the wonderful things that happen when Adam Smith comes into the picture and we have competition?
It shows that competition helps. It certainly does, yes.
Could part of our concern here be, and I know I have had this discussion with others around the horseshoe, right now, we've got the stormwater issue. We got the CSO thing that you're traveling to Chicago to try to sign, seal, and deliver that thing. Is it just too much to ask the Department of our Government to do just one more huge mammoth thing? Is that where you say high risk?
That's one of the, one of the things that I'm most concerned about is that we're already moving with the stormwater utility into an expanded business function. And if we were to take on the role of waste collection, now we're moving into another business line, right? Now we're moving into another service area.
I get it. Now, Councilman Seer mentioned something that I think was interesting. Not quite sure he wants to get into a 10-year marriage here on a 7-3-
Sure.
-proposition. How could we change that without going back to all the bidders? I mean, they're bidding on a certain template.
We did negotiate, or we did put language in the RFP that allowed us to negotiate some of these terms and to adjust the timeline. So that was, we have some flexibility that was built into the RFP itself to do that.
And if the PDC folks currently run it, if something were to happen and somebody else would come in, they would have to abide by this particular-
If they were purchased, if somebody came in and bought PDC, yes, they would. They would have to-
It's conceivable.
It is conceivable.
Kind of like the water company.
Sure, sure.
Well, thank you. That covers most of my questions here. I know originally, the hybrid model was, I think, going to be the management recommendation. But it seemed like that would be very clumsy, and there would be a lot of articulation, coordination issues with that, which you pointed out in the memo. And I get that. But I still have somewhat of an uneasy feeling about not saving the taxpayers some dollars and trying to take this in-house. As tight as our budgets have been, they've been just tight as a tick. We're talking maybe $400,000 more that we don't have to pay out. This is our city's single biggest contract per year. You might want to think about that $400,000 when we try to reconcile the budget when it comes up again. So these are some of the mental gymnastics that are going through my mind as I try to make everybody else here the best decision for our people. Do we need to make the decision tonight?
Well, we need to make the decision tonight if we want to take advantage of the incentives that PDC has put on the table. So that's about $1.5 million for that.
I see, so they're going to be like, like if you're going to a car dealer, if you walk out the, I'm just serious. I mean, in other words, this whole dynamic could change if we don't jump to it right now tonight. Is that right? Because I don't respond too well to that. I usually walk out of the car dealer at that point when they say that the deal would change, so. Is that, is that right?
They have extended the incentives through April 25th. So if council didn't want to act on it tonight, and you wanted to act on it next week, we could certainly do so.
Well, if my peers feel really good about it, and they have the votes, then I guess I don't have too much to say. I don't feel real good about it. I don't have the comfort level that some of my peers may. And that's the reason why I asked the question. However, you know I don't like delays.
Sure.
And I don't like deferrals. So, just for what it's worth, some of my thoughts. Thanks, Manager.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Regan back next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo some of the earlier comments and thank all the participants in making this such a educational, transparent, and very productive process. So to the folks at PDC, Public Works, FOTH, City Manager's Office, I think there, there's a lot of wins here. The increase in recycling to twice a month, extending the lawn, the landscape waste, the, the public education piece. I, I really am glad that it's going to be controlled in-house and that we're getting the credit back for that, because I think with these 10 directors here, 11 directors, we, we have a lot of ideas of what we would like that to look like. So I, I think there's a, a lot of very positive things that have come through this process. I'm particularly excited about the neighborhood trash can pickup. That is something in some of these heritage neighborhoods, I think Councilman Grab and Moore would concur, that, that, that's really going to be an important tool. I would just ask for some clarification also, though, on that, that number of 130, because I probably get a handful of requests for garbage cans every year. So if, if that increases, how would we deal with that? And as, as, as we look at the costs, I think it's easy to see that, you know, it, it's easy to see where we are today, but the one thing that is an unknown risk that I think this council needs to take seriously is the disposal of, of the recycling goods. And that market is remarkably different than it was six months ago, let alone a year ago. That, that is something that has a lot of unknown risk. And for us to assume that, that, that could wipe out some cash reserves relatively quickly. So for the, the, the way the contracts are set up, that's PDC's responsibility. So that, that's one risk taken off our table. And that's, that's something that I think is really significant and should not be underestimated. A lot of good discussion here with my colleagues, and I won't ask the same questions, but Mr. Manager, I, I do have one piece for the education part. I don't like the word "subscription recycling," because all you have to do is make a phone call. A subscription, to me, implies a cost, because I've never had a magazine subscription that I could get for nothing. So I, I think we need to, to be proud of the fact that that barrier, for some, is removed. And that, that, that's a good thing, you know? Let's promote it as free recycling in Peoria. Call 1-800-PDC, whoever we call, but let's, let's make that clear, that it's a free benefit now, or it's part of the package, we should say. So that's all I've got. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Euler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Manager, one quick question. Several points or questions have been brought up tonight. If we approve this item, does that still allow you the opportunity to go back and massage and work through those items?
The, the council directed, the, if the council approves this, that you're directing myself and the Corporation Council to negotiate with PDC the final contract. So I think it does allow us to have this discussion with PDC and to go forward with that.
Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and make the motion then to approve 18-100 selection of Peoria disposal services to provide all of our solid waste collection. Just a couple comments on that. I think that we have met the objectives we set out for here amongst the group and what the community has asked for through our survey that we put out. We have improved the cost numbers from the onset here of where we started when the RFPs came in. We are going to get the neighborhood cans picked up, which is a, a big win for me, and I think is really important in some of our older neighborhood districts. We're increasing recycling services to every other week, which I think is a, a huge win here and something that we were asked to do. I'm certainly open to looking at universal recycling in the future, but I'd like to see us get our numbers up before we go and, and provide a, a service for that. And I think that going to every other week will be the start down that path. It also is keeping us out of getting into a business that we shouldn't be getting into. We aren't going to be acquiring assets here. We aren't going to be bringing in more manpower and pension costs long-term. And it's, you know, acquiring a business is one thing, starting one from scratch is another, and we aren't equipped to start a business from scratch. And this also allows us the opportunity to restore the garbage fund balance, which then will allow us to pay back the general fund balance, which has been a major objective of mine since I came on the council, is getting the balances put where they belong and getting this cleaned up. So thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you. I had a second on that motion by Councilmember Ruck Regal, Madam Clerk. Just a couple comments that haven't been mentioned yet. Appreciate all the council's comments, and again, thanks to the manager and his team for, for this. The, the council communication, I think, really did a good job of, of reminding everybody how this process happened. And, and it is nice that we've received some, some accolades and some thanks from the community that appreciated the, the length of time. The public meetings started way back in July of 2016. Then the RFP was released in August. Those RFPs were due in November. And all during this time, there was discussion in the community going on, understanding, you know, what the issues were that we were talking about, trying to identify what was important to our citizens. And then we had the policy session on March 20th, where we refined this, this down further. So I, I think we, at least in my experience and time here and having discussions on the new solid waste, we've never started the discussion that far in advance and had this much opportunity to provide input and, and feedback with the, with the vendors that were participating in the RFP. And I think, at least from my opinion, we're extremely fortunate to have a company like PDC, who earlier this year, we gave a proclamation to for being in the business for 90 years. And, you know, they've obviously learned a lot over 90 years because they're still in business, and the company is growing. And it's nice, I think it's something that we can boast on and be proud of, that we have a company like PDC who's not only been in business 90 years, but been here doing it. And, and we appreciate, we appreciate that. The customer satisfaction numbers are something that I, I know that the, I was looking at, at one of the, the charts that showed the evaluation, and, and it showed a customer service level that, that ours was higher. And, look, we have, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to argue against the city's team, but I have never heard, very seldom, I should say, have I heard a bad word about the, the service that PDC provides in our community. They do an outstanding job. So our, our Public Works is second to none. I think that they prove that year in and year out, especially over the winter. But with the additional work that they've taken on over the last number of years in, in building roads and so on, I think they do a, a great job. And I think that their bid provided us some good leverage in this contract. And I applaud Director Reese and his team for, for putting forward a good, a good, solid bid. But you, it's hard to argue with 90 years of experience in this business. And I think that, I think that 90 years of experience has a, has a much sharper look at this whole business model and, and how it operates. And I think that, I think that we're well-served by, by trying to keep everybody honest here. But I think that clearly, our citizens aren't looking for us to go into the garbage business and go into an area that we don't know, as Councilman Euler mentioned, increasing the capital costs, additional labor, healthcare, retirement, the liability that, that, that those folks have that deal with those, those heavy dumpsters and, and everything else. I think that it's all in all, a good decision. I think the city manager and his team did a good job of, of saving us money over the term of this contract. And it also, I think that from the number of meetings that I was involved in, participated in, the public hearings, the policy sessions, and so on, FOTH really, FOTH really brought a lot to the table for us. I think the value that we received from, from Josh being involved with this process and helping us through this process also added a lot to our negotiating ability. So I, I appreciate, again, everyone participating. Thanks to PDC for wanting this contract. You know, one of the things that we haven't really talked a lot publicly about, we've talked about it a little bit, but this, this changing dynamic of, of where a lot of these recyclables are going to go, especially in light of what's happening in China, is, is clearly an area that we would be totally in the dark on. And, and they're not. And I'm glad that, that we're not having to try to figure out that, that dynamic right now. So all in all, I think this is, this is good for the community, it's good for our citizens, and it's good for a 90-year-old company that hopefully will be around for another 90. Councilman Grab, is that, I have your light on?
Well, I, I'm quite sure that PDC has factored the China aspect into their price equation. Also, clarity on the motion here that's before the body tonight. I understand there were a few council members who directed the city manager to go back and discuss some items with the PDC. If you approve this tonight, what, what leverage do you give Donald Lice and Patrick Urick if this is approved tonight without response on these items that were of concern to all of you? That's why I bring up whether this is ripe for final approval tonight. If we, we approve this tonight, why do they have to cooperate with you? Not that they perhaps won't, but it is business that we're talking. What have we just done to your ability to incorporate some of the feedback of the council members into this?
Well, there, there's a number of, of points that were brought up by council that I think needed elaboration as part of the contract itself. The minority hiring requirements, the auditing requirements that we built in as part of the RFP process. There's, I think, a couple of material issues that we would, that we would need to ask them about that would have some impact. I think the, the, the cost escalator and the term would be two. That's a question, Councilman. I don't, I don't know if, if.
What, what do you have on your list there? Because I have down about four or five items.
I think I've got a dozen. I mean, we had, I mean, there's, there's the, you know, minority hiring requirements, looking at the, the cost escalators in the term, looking at the, the number of neighborhood trash cans, you know, making sure that we build out the elements of our education program, which really falls on the city, it doesn't fall on PDC. So, no, I have a number of things that I, that I wrote down here that, that I would want to make sure that we flushed out.
Didn't. I don't think we have all of them, but all I'm saying is, this might be the best way to go, but I, I just don't think we should be approving it tonight, subject to, I think we should wait and see what their feedback is and whether they're willing to play ball with some of the concerns that the council brought up. This is, after all, the largest single contract.
Councilmember Grab, what we could do is have this body condition on making good progress relative to those comments that are brought up by council. And we can certainly look at, look at the video and transcribe all those things that were brought up by council. And if we don't believe that we're making sufficient progress, we can report that to council.
But if we go ahead and approve it tonight, because what's, Councilor Euler, I never like to disagree with you, but just want to be sure we understand what the motion is. Because if the motion is, as it's stated here, to approve the selection to PDC to provide solid waste collection services, RFP 29-17 for a seven-year term with three-year option to renew, direct you and Donald Lice to execute the necessary contract. Once we do that, we've lost our leverage, in my opinion. So how do we get around that, other than waiting until you can discuss this with them and bring it back maybe on the 24th?
I mean, if, if you want us to, to bring back the contract for the, the council, to ratify the contract, I think we could certainly do something like that. And then you'd have the opportunity to approve the contract and give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
We don't have mammoth changes in it.
Right. No, no.
In any case, I mean, it's, it shouldn't be a deal killer for them.
Like I said, the, the, the two items that are material are the term and the, and the CPI escalator. I, I think everything else, we anticipated we would have to. The reporting requirements were built in the RFP, that's, that, that will be, again, and the minority hiring piece will be subject to us finalizing that as part of the contract negotiation. And I think that they're, they're important, but it was made very clear on both that they were requirements that we had as part of the RFP when we issued the RFP. The, the issue of the term is something that I think is a little different, and it wasn't really contemplated. Or the, the, you know, we, we had one discussion about the CPI, we did not have a second. So.
Well, if, you know, I, I just think we need to empower you and our Corporation Council to work with them. And if they're acquiescent in these very reasonable items of input, then I'd be in favor of voting for it as soon as possible. I don't know if it could be brought back on the 24th or not. How long does it take down to sit, I mean, how long does it take to sit down in a room and work this out with them? Then if they're not willing to work it out with us, then that's a different dynamic. I think we should know about it before we go ahead and execute the contract.
Just waiting for the councilman, there's others that have lights, so I'm just waiting for.
Yes, I, I'm, I'm done, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm not finished.
Okay, thank you. I had Councilwoman Moore next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If, if, I was checking with Corporation Council, just to make sure I was correct on this. And some of you have experienced this in the past, where we may approve something this week, and we can come back the very next meeting and undo what we approved. And so what I like about us approving this tonight, because I would be in favor of this, is that PDC understands that, to your point, Councilman, if there is not good faith negotiation and we can't move forward, this is not a done deal, because next week, if we approve it this week, we are able to, next week, to reverse what we did today.
Correct.
So just because we approve it tonight doesn't mean it's done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Councilman Seer, next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just need one clarification from Councilman Euler's motion. If we vote on this tonight, does that include the increased schedule, the fee increase schedule on our side, Mr. Euler?
You've already voted on the fees. The only fee that you haven't voted on is 2022.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would, I, I tend to, I agree with Councilman Grab. I would be more comfortable if we had these things, these conditions, and other things that have been mentioned tonight negotiated with PDC, and they were part of the contract. Now, I don't know if Councilman Euler would be open to modifying his motions or doing a substitute motion with approval subject to the reporting requirements and whatever the other conditions are that have been discussed tonight. That might be a way to handle it.
Down that path, we're going to get to a point where, how many more times do we go back to the table and ask and address more questions? We're, we're giving authority to go and negotiate the remainder of this contract. And if it's not agreeable, then we just disapprove it on the next go-around. Because, I, I mean, in my opinion, if we continue down the path of not addressing it, we need to open this back up to all respondents and continue to have these discussions and negotiate with them, rather than whittling this down one path.
If, if I could respond, it wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to just disapprove it. Tonight, if we move forward, if your motion is approved, then the contract would be approved. If we wanted to come back, somebody would have to do a motion to reconsider, which requires, you know, people that voted one way to make the motion and to vote a certain way. So it's a little bit more difficult than just. way. So, it's a little bit more difficult than just disapproving something that already happened. And we're not really opening it up. PDC's only extended their incentives to April 25th, which is eight days from today. So, all we're doing is extending the decision for one more week, and then we could approve the actual contract with the conditions that we've asked to be included, to be part of it.
Okay. We have a motion in the second on the floor, and I had a couple more lights, or at least one light just went on. So, I'm comfortable with voting on the motion on the floor. I'm comfortable with the manager, giving the manager and the corporation council the authority to negotiate the items that we discussed. And I'm also confident that representatives from PDC that are here tonight are hearing the concerns that we have. So, they have the knowledge of where the council is. We did not take votes that certain pieces of this, you know, concerns by different members of the council. We didn't vote to see if there was a majority of the council that agreed with all those different pieces. And so, you know, I don't think we want to have a vote on every single item that went through here tonight, but I do think that the manager and corporation council heard it, and PDC heard it. The, probably the rate, the 2.75 rate is probably one that will need to be discussed. And frankly, the term is pretty significant. And I think that the seven-year term, from what I have heard over time, largely has to do with the purchase of the equipment and how long they need to amortize those trucks. So, if it's five with a five-year option, or seven and three, you know, I'm very comfortable with the seven and the three. And I don't know where the rest of the council is, but we didn't vote on that. So, if, just to clarify, the council, or the manager said several times that the things that you would like to see are already built into it. So, that's going to be there regardless. You don't have to worry about that. Said it at least three times. So, if by chance, and this is to Councilwoman Moore's point, if the manager brings us back something and the majority of the council doesn't like it, someone on the prevailing side has to bring that item up for reconsideration, and then we'll vote on whether to reconsider it or not. Chances are that if someone brought an item up that wasn't addressed to their satisfaction, they would be willing to make a motion to reconsider, if they voted to approve it tonight. So, I don't think that we're throwing all of our ability to negotiate away. I think we're giving it back to the people that have negotiated this from day one for us. So, I had Councilman Montalongo, and then Councilwoman Aikerson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm very supportive of PDC. They're a great company, with all the comments that you made, Mayor, and certainly a business that is headquartered in my district. I really would like to see them. I don't know if they're even open to making any comments after they've heard us, giving them a chance to speak to us.
If, the floor would certainly be, I don't see any objection on the council. The floor would certainly be open if PDC did want to make any type of a comment at this point.
Hi, Matt Coulter, 83, 25 North Branbury Lane in Peoria. Thanks, council. Thank you, Mayor, for your time. Just a few comments on, I think you're related to some of the questions regarding the seven-year contract, three-year term, some of the other things that have been discussed. You know, we have submitted this bid. It was due November 9th. We have been working with Patrick and Josh from Footh for the last at least six months, I think. It's been a very long process, and they have done a very fine job for the city of Peoria, and the residents, and also the council. So, credit where credit's due. And I think also Public Works, you know, being a check of what PDC does, has done a great job. But the seven-year term and the three-year option is what we have negotiated on the table, and I think it's been a very good negotiation. A lot of that, again, is due to the fact that it's a large amount of capital needed to do the services that we're talking about. And our trucks are at an age that they need to be replaced. They're showing a lot of wear and tear. And part of doing a big capital investment, you know, typically city contracts, you want a long contract and return. And most of our city contracts that we have throughout central Illinois are typically anywhere from a five-year term on the low end to a 10-year contract on the high end. So, it is typical in the industry to have long-term contracts like we do, and like we're requesting. We've negotiated in good faith with the city on the seven-year and the three-year contract.
Are there any, I mean, you listened to most of our conversation here tonight. Are there any other items that you'd want to address that we discuss?
You know, city manager and I have been very open. We plan to have the minority hiring clause in there. Everything in the contract, believe it or not, the reporting, you know, we plan to do that. We plan to do the education with Stacy and city staff. It's going to be a very cooperative, and we're going to have to work together to do a very good education effort. It's not going to be easy, but we have a lot of work ahead of us to educate people properly on recycling, on increasing those efforts, and it's not an easy task. But it's going to be, it'll be an effort that we do together, and yes, it is going to be the city's responsibility to do that. But it'll definitely be worked through with us, and some things we'd like to see as well. As far as the neighborhood cans, you know, that number was given to us. We're saying we'll do that because our trucks are passing through those neighborhoods. Some of those cans are ornamental. One of them is off of Sterling. You probably don't even see it and recognize it. It is a concrete container with a garbage can inside. We're not even sure how often they get used, okay? But we are willing to help clean and beautify the city, because, again, we do live and work here, and we want to be here for a long time. I want to bring back one comment on the concern on the length of the contract. We've had the contract since 2010, and we have renegotiated with the city three times. And every time has been a benefit to the city, meaning either more service, a reduction, street sweepings to the landfill. Every time we have come back, it has been an improvement to the city and the taxpayers. So, this is not the last time you've seen us under a new contract that's voted forward tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question about the process, city manager. So, if we approve this tonight, and then you can hear that the council members are asking you to go back and work with them to reduce the number of years the contract's for, and then the option, and then the cost escalator issue. You could just hear from Mr. Coulter's response. What would we expect? You know, you'd schedule a meeting with them tomorrow, the next day, and then we would get a memo, up or down, you made some headway, or no, and then what happens? I'm more interested in if you don't come to some, you know, if you don't get an agreement that this would be a five-year contract with a five-year option, or if the inflation number doesn't go down. I think that those happen to be the two probably most important issues. Then where are we?
Well, we negotiated with PDC in terms of the discussion of what we have on the table right now, which is the 2.75% cost escalator, a seven-year term with a three-year option to renew. I would certainly go back and ask them if that's something they would be willing to reconsider, and talk with them about that. If they're not, and we draft a contract, I would say, here's the contract, subject to them not wanting to change their mind, and that this would be it, and I would share that with you so you can take a look at it. If I felt that the negotiations were at a point where we were at loggerheads, I might say to you, maybe we need to reconsider this, so that we can come back and reconsider it in front of the council. I mean, I think that that's, those are the options that I see playing out here as it would go forward.
Okay, so, what I'm hearing from you is that this decision is to give you authorization to consummate the contract as presented, but you've heard that there are some concerns. You will bring that up to their attention, and then, and I guess what I want to know is, then what? Then next week, on our agenda, we have, now the council gives its stamp of approval, or back to the drawing board, resubmit, you know, ask for another RFP session, and then where do we go? I mean, it just seems to me that, I mean, my view at this point is, I would like to just vote on Councilman Euler's motion, and as the mayor says, not pick this apart by item by item, because I don't, you know, it appears to me that we might be opening the door then for another month, you know, several months drawn-out process, as to Councilman Grab's point, that you would need to open it up again for the other respondents. So, it's unfortunate we didn't have this conversation, you know, in the last time we talked about this in March.
Well, I think at this point, what I would, what I would say is that if, we'll certainly have a conversation with them. I'm not, we'll draft a contract. I'd be happy to share it. If there is a significant amount of concern from the council, we'll put it on the agenda as a motion to reconsider. That way, otherwise, if the council approves, we'll execute the contract.
May I ask a follow-up? So, to city clerk Ball, or maybe it's to our corporation council, is that the process? You know, we come up, you know, every week, we're asked to approve something to go forward, and then we don't let people necessarily hang out there, wondering what they've, where we sit with the statuses. Is this-
That's one mechanism that could be utilized, Councilwoman Aikerson. As Councilmember Moore said, that this matter could be reconsidered. However, the other process, the other process that could be utilized is, we've heard the direction of council, and we were directed to draft a contract. And if we can't deliver a contract that meets the totality of some of the comments here, not that any one component is absolutely essential, but just the flavor of the comments here, if we don't believe that we have a good contract that meets that, we'll come back and say we were unable to negotiate a contract, which will require us to reopen this.
Okay, but what I'm trying to reveal or just highlight, we don't have a consensus on the council, that these particular concerns are important enough to all of us. And believe me, I've been on the other side of this before, when I'm trying to urge council people to reconsider their viewpoint and think about the other details. So, I'm very sensitive to these issues, but I want to hear more about what we really can expect and what we can, you know, what we can expect. And I do not think that you've heard a majority of the council voice a concern. And if, I don't know how you would get to that point without us taking a vote, how many of us feel that the five-year, five-year option and the reduction in the inflation number or the cost escalator is significant enough to grind this to a halt, have them go back to the drawing board, and renegotiate, which is, you know, I'm just calling it like it is?
I'd like to thank Councilwoman Aikerson for trying to, this is the reason that we have a city manager and a staff that negotiate contracts instead of having 11 elected officials do it. It's the same reason that we don't negotiate the contracts with our representative folks. There's a lot of thought that goes into why we have this form of government. And the fact that they've been negotiating this contract, you know, since, well, in August of last year was when the RFPs went out. There's just been discussion going on back and forth since then. At the risk of, and I'm just, I'm not necessarily going to say we should do this, but at the risk of getting into a situation where we're going to go back and take a vote on every single item that's been negotiated, I do think that, you know, potentially, we could give the manager direction on whether the five versus, five and five versus seven and three is a deal killer, because I don't get the impression that it is, if everybody understands what I'm saying on that. So, if, you know, I hate to, I hate to bring that up, because I don't, I don't want to get us into a situation where we're going, going to go back and give the manager direction on every single item that's been negotiated. That's why I'm, you can understand why I'm leery to get this started, because I don't think that we should do that. But if the council is interested, or if verbally everyone would like to say whether that's a deal killer or not, I think that the manager deserves direction on that. Because I would, I would think that out of everything that was brought up, that's probably going to be the hardest one to swallow for PDC, is my guess. So, I don't know if there's necessarily a procedure for this, but, you know, perhaps just a show of hands by council members on, I would like to see if, by show of hands, if we are supportive of hearing, he can negotiate, but is it a deal killer for council members if it stays as it is right now, which is seven and three?
Can I just comment on that? If we do that, then he's not going to, our hands are tied. He will have no basis to negotiate, because we have already given our card away.
But my point is, councilwoman, is that the direction was given, the question was asked as it was speaking for the entire council. Councilmember Seer would have rather seen a five and five versus a seven and three that was negotiated. So, it should not be assumed that all 11 voting members-
I understand.
...would like it to be that way. So, we're not necessarily taking anything away from him to negotiate, because the council may not want it to, that might not be a deal killer for the whole council.
Wouldn't it make more sense to let him, to wait one week, let him go negotiate, and then come back and see what he gets?
I'm just trying to facilitate the discussion here. A lot of times, when, as I said, when you have 11 elected officials that want to micromanage what we pay a city manager and staff to do, this is what happens. We have a negotiated settlement here. We can, there's a motion in the second on the floor. If the motion passes, the city manager can go talk to him, and if somebody doesn't like what he comes back with next week, we can do a reconsideration. That's probably the cleanest way to do it. I got about 10 more lights here. Does everybody still want to talk again? Okay, I'll start with Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this council decides that we are better at business than anybody else who's in the business. We have sat here now for the past almost hour, and we're talking about a five and a five, or a seven and a three. Anybody in business knows that when you make an investment, you've got to be able to allocate those out over years, and that makes a big difference about what equipment you're going to buy. We look here at an evaluation that was done, separate from the council. Under PDC, understanding of work, a five. We look at qualifications, a 7.5. They know the business. They know the equipment they need. They know the investment. They have provided excellent service, making the investments into their equipments as they've needed to. They've decided, on their proposal to us, that a seven and a three works better than a five and a five. However, we think around this horseshoe, because all of a sudden, now five and a five sounds better than a seven and a three, that we need to come back here and relook at this. We've got a contract in front of us that we're supposed to vote on. There's a motion in the second. I would second your opinion that we just go ahead and vote on the motion at hand. We've had multiple times to be able to talk about this, as a council, in many different formats, in many different sessions, and the city manager has been available for every single one of us as the council members to be able to speak over with. It's interesting that, again, while we say we don't want to ever go up to the end of a deadline, here we are, on the night we all know that we would be here to vote on it, and all of a sudden, all these questions come out of the woodwork like they've never existed.
I have Councilman Grab.
Well, there is a problem with that line of reasoning, and the problem is simply this. this: Last I heard, the administration recommendation was for the hybrid model. Tonight, is there anybody here who had this presentation before tonight? Please raise your hand. Okay, this is the night that we're given the presentation. Now, if we already knew all of this, you follow me? If we already knew all of this, why are we meeting now, and giving this handout with this excellent presentation, Manager Eric? All I'm saying is, I think we should empower our team, if we really are serious about empowering our administration team to do a good job for our citizens, let them talk about the items that we seem to all think are important. I understand Mr. Coulter's comments about the cost of capital, equipment, and everything, and why probably they're most comfortable with 7.3, I get it, I know that. But to not be comfortable voting for this tonight, with some of the items that were brought up, should not make us heretics, who should be burned at the stake. What the real issue is, is why would it be considered unreasonable for us not to want to vote on this particular document, which is just presented to us tonight? To me, it's just that simple, and doesn't mean we won't come back and go ahead with PDC, but we'll have a comfort level that some of us don't really have tonight, and that I certainly don't have tonight, because I thought the administration was gung ho about the hybrid model. Since we were concerned about risk, that the city would get into a business that hasn't done heretofore, we could kind of get our toes wet, and I thought that was probably a prudent way of doing it, instead of just jumping into it completely. But now, we don't even want to do that. And, no, I'm sorry, I just, I think sometimes there are things that government can actually do better than the private sector, and there are things that the private sector can do better than government. And I think the public sector, in this particular case, by providing a bid, and by that excellent policy session we had, where we pressed the folks who were bidding on this, they had a chance to hear what some of our concerns were. Through this discussion, which some of us are so afraid is going to continue for another week, we have gotten to this point, but now, it's like, vote for it now or else. No, 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 that's not the way it works. And this policymaking body should not accept this. Tonight, accept this or leave it. Although, no, if that's the case, because I see no harm in getting these things worked out, empowering our city manager, and our Corporation Counsel to incorporate some things that are feasible, if they come back and say, you know, we couldn't get them to go with everything, then the council members may say, well, we don't think all those were important, and we still vote to approve it. To me, it's eminently reasonable. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. You know, and I, I always appreciate the passion that Councilman Grab brings to the discussion, I thank you very much. But just for the listening audience and people that may not know, we all did receive, with our original agenda, 14 double-sides pages, that, none of this was, this isn't new. So 14 double-sized pages with red ink identifying what was changed, it's nice to be able, it's nice to be able to put that in a PowerPoint, so everybody can understand it. There's no new information that we didn't have when we got the agenda last week. None of the information that was put in front of us tonight was the first time we've seen it, in terms of this contract, am I right? Thank you. Councilman Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to call question?
Okay. I think there's no more lights on here, so we have a motion in a second, just so everybody remembers, Councilman Euler made the motion, seconded by Councilman Ruckregel. Seeing no further discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion passes with 10 ayes, one nay. Councilmember Grab?
Yes, we're at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Citizens to address, up first is Joyce Blumenschein.
Not on a, we don't do that on a special meeting, we just have the agenda item, yeah.
Sure this is on? Thank you, whoops, there it's on, pardon. Joyce Blumenschein, 2419 East Reservoir in Peoria. And as a person who spoke last Tuesday at Public Comments, thinking at that time, the hybrid model was the focus of this council, even though some other discussion had been held at your March meeting, and we'd had different proposals, maybe I'm the only one in this room, apparently, or the only one in the entire city, that had a clue that, you know, three days after April 10th, on Friday the 13th, that was just last Friday, there would now be a special meeting called for you all to vote on the largest city contract, the most money we citizens pay for essential services, yes, garbage pickup, and a really good idea that many of us thought was on the table, and it was going to be on the agenda April 24th, has disappeared. Now, I'm not sure what shell that disappeared under, or what magic had, or whatever, but as a citizen of Peoria, this process, that at the last minute, this council gets dumped with something totally new, and you are, I apologize, from my view as a humble citizen, forced into a one-way street tunnel with a, with a vote that we know has many people on one corporate side, and other council members that are willing to, to question this, validly question this contract, and thank you, Councilman Grab, thank you very much, other council members who have dared to ask questions tonight and question this process. I mean, it's really a concern to me, 10 years means from 2018, 2028. The 10 years that PDC had this contract before, we as citizens had to beg you, not out of the goodness of PDC's heart, because they never proposed it, but we had to beg to simply get recycling pickup that was better. So finally, that happened. And then, in all those years since, what has PDC done? They've done a good job of what they do, but what have they done to improve recycling? I think that's a big zero, sorry. Have they done it, city education? Do we get more than one sentence a year on our annual PDC reminder for garbage pickup? I mean, I'm sorry, for PDC, nice reminders for recycling pickup, we get one sentence a year? Thank you, citizen, you've enabled us to collect how many, you know, tons of recyclables? Do we know what they all are, or where they've gone, or how many trees they've saved, or how many aluminum manufacturing and mines they've saved? No. So as far as praising the daily, regular good job they do, yes, that's great, but for the support that they've given to improve services, I'm sorry, that has been a battle every time these things come up. And now you're going to lock yourselves into another 10 years, and thank you, yes, city administrator, public works, you've tried so hard to break open this mold that we seem to be stuck in as a city, and I'm sorry, it's the club, thinking, well, we can't do anything new, we can't improve things, because, you know, it, it's too much risk. Granted, there's a lot on everybody's plates, but how do you get change? How do you get a healthier city? How do you get new jobs? How now can any part of this recycling collection be a possible new avenue for new employment, and an entrepreneur in Peoria, hey, to make something out of plastics, or make a new business here, out of glass recycling? We don't know. It's locked in. And everybody's tired, and everybody's got too much to do and too many demands, but this, folks, is for 10 more years, and you fought hard for getting incremental, granted, they are very important improvements, but obviously, there's still a lot of questions. And I don't think I'm the only one who was really, you know, kind of just totally knocked off my feet to see that this was coming up tonight, last Friday. So I thank you all for your hard work, but, but this process at City Hall, whether it's the city's costliest garbage contract, or different councils' votes on money for hotels, whatever it is, something has to change about this process. I don't think it's fair to each of you, and I certainly don't think it's fair to the public or the future of this city for doing better as a community, which we all could. There's much more to garbage collection, recycling, and yard waste than merely getting it out of your way and off of your yard. Folks, it's for the good of the planet, and for what our responsibility is as citizens. Thank you.
Next, I have Mary Hayes.
Hello, can you hear me? My name's Mary Hayes, and I live at 2915 West Anne Street. And I was at the policy meeting for the trash removal at the public library. But I am appalled today at questions not being answered before taking a vote. And Congressman Euler, congressman, Councilman Euler made a motion, and Sid, Congress, Congressperson Sid, seconded it before the discussion was over. I find that appalling. I find it appalling that, that this contract was voted on tonight, when questions were still asked. Now, I represent 11,605 registered voters. I am an important person. I influence a lot of people. I don't understand how my council people can sit around this horseshoe and make decisions without consciously answering the questions that come up before voting on the contract. We have until April the 25th, that is five, a, a week to even answer the questions. Why did you have to do it today? Now, when I see my constituents on the bus, and I see them in the grocery store, I have to look them in the eye and explain this to them. And the good old boys, I have to explain their, their actions, too. So I, I just have to go back and explain what has happened here tonight, and it doesn't look pretty for the next election.
I have Joyce Herrent, next.
Thank you very much, Joyce Herrent, 3914 North Donna Lane. I'm extremely disappointed to have heard all of the really excellent discussion and questions that were brought up about the contract, and then not to hear a motion to defer till next week. That was, to me, a no-brainer, go back, discuss, see what comes out of contract discussions, and, and then vote next week. I, too, like the others, were, I was very shocked to see the hybrid option gone, and really, very few days, you don't always have time to read everything that's issued on a Friday, and, and be able to absorb it all quickly, certainly citizens can't, and I would think perhaps council members also. I am disappointed that we are doomed for another decade to have subscription recycling and not universal recycling. Understand that maybe it will be brought up, but I am not hopeful for that in the future. I am also disappointed that while it's great, and I really am thankful that we have, or we're going to, to every other week, recycling, but the promotion of the recycling for the past 10 years has been absent. I get no notices, I'm glad Joyce gets notices about, from PDC, I get nothing. But I'm disappointed that all the responsibility to improve recycling has been shifted to the city, and I would hope that within the contract that you negotiate, that you will put some burden on PDC, because quite frankly, for Matt Coulter to step up here and have this smile how he's going to cooperate the city for recycling, leaves me extremely skeptical, because nothing's happened with promoting recycling for the past decade. The diversity aspect, I absolutely agree with Councilman Moore, needs to be very specific, very challenging goals to make sure that we have minority candidates being hired from the city of Peoria, and not from anywhere else, that we have strict requirements for that, and that it'd be a very challenging goal, because I think we have too often put that aside, and we haven't really, really embraced that and internalized that with I think that's probably it, but I, I still think we haven't, I haven't heard what happens to my $50 deposit, if this contract goes forward. I haven't heard whether I'm supposed to call up PDC, come pick it up for July 1, and then they deliver the same container to me back, that same day, or what happens? But I'll be looking forward to getting my $50 back, I think. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
We have an executive session.
Mr. Counsel?
Yes, and our motion would be appropriate pursuant to Section 2C1 of the Opening Meetings Act, which exempts discussions relative to performance of a specific employee, as well as 2C11, which exempts pending litigation from open discussion, and Section 2C21, which exempts discussions of previously closed minutes for approval.
We have a motion to go into executive session by Councilman Jensen, and seconded by Councilmember Euler. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We have a motion to adjourn, Councilman, Councilman Agasson, seconded by Councilmember Turner. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We'd like to thank our listening audience, and we will be back for the regularly scheduled council meeting next Tuesday, April the 24th. Meeting is adjourned.